Call to order this regular meeting of the Monument Town Council, Monday, October 6, 2025. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Erickson, we take roll, please. Here? Here.
Councilmember Abbott here. Councilmember Fiorito.
Here.
Councilmember Chronic.
Here.
Councilmember Kimball.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
All right, any disclosures of conflicts of interest? The town attorney.
Sorry, no mayor.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented.
Second, motion is second. Everybody vote. That go up? It all passed? All right, that motion passed seven to zero. First thing, this is going to be sort of different how we normally do things, but the first thing we're going to do tonight is we're going to take a recess for about fifteen minutes in order to recognize Ron. Oh, well, okay, we will do the recognition first. Who will be doing that? Tom Tharnish? Okay.
So we are here tonight to recognize longstanding senior member of the Public Works team at Monument, Mr. Ron Rathburn.
Tom, can you make sure that the mic is on?
It's on.
Okay.
Yeah. You hear me okay, Will? Okay. Ron has been the longest tenured employee here in Monument that I am aware of. He has been employed here for more than thirty-nine years and has held many positions throughout his career. He has worked for at least nine different town managers, multiple mayors, and multiple town councils over those years. He has been here so long that we would often joke about Ron being the one guy who knows where all the bodies are buried. Since he grew up in this town, we figured he's got a little underground knowledge. Meaning he could tell you where things were and what they look like as far back as at least thirty-nine years ago. Ron's background was shaped by his service to our country as a United States Marine before moving into the public works field. Funny moment here, back in the year 2000, Ron was the water foreman in that just to be happen the guy that when I started here at the town, he's the one that interviewed me. Started out as inter-level guy working up. So that's kind of an interesting fact that a lot of people, I don't believe are aware of. Ron is the go-to guy to find things that have been buried in the ground for many years. Ron's knowledge has been invaluable and he will be sorely missed. Ron has taught me patience, knowledge, taking a look at the big picture and making the right decisions. We wish Ron the very best in his retirement and hope that he visits frequently. And let's give Ron a round of applause for his thirty-nine-plus years of dedicated service to the citizens of this town.
So Ron, did you count Tom?
Every once in a while, I get a little hint, like, oh, you don't want to be digging there.
The one that really counts is the one that I ran over the first Public Works Director's cat and we buried him out back in the shop.
Yeah, don't dig there, right? Same way, the staff put together this plaque, I'm just going to read it out loud and then present it to you. So presented to Ron Rathburn, a true cornerstone of our community. For forty years, well, we say thirty-nine, but we round up to forty. You have dedicated yourself to the town you grew up. You grew up in through countless sleepless nights, moving snow, repairing water mains, running crews, and guiding us through challenges, big and small. Your service in the United States Marines distilled in you a discipline that carried over into every aspect of your work. Here you have not only learned, but have also taught, passing along knowledge, wisdom, and perspective to generations of teammates. You've led by example with patience, with forgiveness, and with an unwavering commitment to doing the job right. Your career is more than years of service, is a legacy of leadership, growth, and inspiration. You've shown us what it means to care deeply for both the work and the people who carry it forward. On behalf of all who have had the privilege to work beside you, thank you. Your dedication has shaped this town, this team, and each of us. May your retirement be as full and rewarding as the service you've given to others. So once again, congratulations.
Thank you.
And there's, outside the table here is some cakes and some plates and things and invite all of you to get a slice.
Hey, Ron, I just want to say, say, if you ever have the opportunity to play horseshoes and Ron is around, make sure he's on your team. Because he hits the, whatever that stake is, every single time, and he will take your money.
His second career. I'd like to say something.
Sure.
First off, I'd like to say thanks to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, because he helped me get up every morning and come in to a place that was challenging. The other thing, like, thank my family. My family in the past had done the same job back, back when, I don't know how long ago, I had a couple uncles that were part of Public Works back World War I. My grandfather was a mayor here in Monument in the late forties for fourteen years. My granddad was, my great-grandfather was, had one or two steam engines in the town and ran the threshing machine during harvest for one. And then also ran, took the, the steam engine down to the lake, cut the ice off the lake, and then hauled it up to conveyor belt to the ice house, which was a very needed something in this community at the time, before refrigeration, so. Am I going to miss it? Oh, yeah, he did, in the summer times, he would take, he would take his steam engine up on the mountain, the shoe bar trail up there above the Air Force Academy, it was named after him, he'd take his steam engine up there with a sawmill and run, make railroad ties, lumber, whatever need was needed. And he shows up in the calendars once in a while for the the local calendar from the, who, the Tribune puts that on, I believe, now?
Yeah.
Yeah. The Historical Society, yeah, so. Seen him come, I seen him go. I had the opportunity to become Public Works Director a long time ago and my grandmother used to say, if you want aggravation, just put a rock in your shoe. And at that point in my life, I decided I was never going to be in the place that Tom wanted or where Tom's at, because I wanted to be able to go home at night and sleep and leave it here. Whereas I knew from previous experience and previous directors that it didn't always happen that way. Last, I'd like to thank all the guys I work with that are here. You guys made it easy for me to get up in the morning and come to work. Because there was, sometimes there were conflicts, but they, we took care of them, we got them handled. So, thanks for hanging out, thanks for letting me hang out, so.
Thank you. All right, with, with that, we will take fifteen minutes so that we all get a moment to to pick on Ron and have some cake. Okay, we're going to bring the meeting back to order. First up, we've got a couple proclamations. I don't have a name tied to who's presenting.
If we could actually do the proclamations first and then the SBDC will do their presentation after.
Okay. I will pass the veteran one down. And here's the small business one for you. And I have two proclamations that say National Veterans Small Business Week 2025. One, one has a seal on it and one doesn't. Okay, no, no worries. All right, so our first proclamation is National Veterans Small Business Week.
Ready?
Ready.
All right. Proclamation recognizing National Veterans Small Business Week 2025. Whereas, National Veterans Small Business Week honors and empowers service members, veterans, members of the National Guard and Reserve, and military spouses who strengthen our economy and communities through entrepreneurship. And whereas, the Pike's Peak Small Business Development Center SBDC and the Colorado Veterans Business Outreach Center VBOC at Mount Carmel Veteran Service Center support veteran entrepreneurs by providing essential services such as counseling, training, business assessments, and referrals to contracting opportunities. And whereas, the Pike's Peak SBDC exists to help local businesses grow and succeed via free consulting and educational programs. And whereas, the Colorado VBOC plays a vital role in the Colorado small business ecosystem by assisting veterans, active-duty service members, and their families in launching and expanding enterprises. And whereas, small businesses face numerous challenges in uncertain economic climates, yet veteran entrepreneurs in Monument and the broader El Paso County region are resilient and contribute to local economic vitality. And whereas, on November 7th, 2025, the Pike's Peak SBDC and Colorado VBOC will host the Annual Veterans Small Business Conference, offering veteran entrepreneurs and their families access to expert speakers, practical training, and connections to resources. And whereas, National Veterans Small Business Week highlights our community's commitment to supporting veteran, veteran business owners and recognizing their contributions to growth, innovation, and job creation. Now therefore, Monument Town Council hereby proclaims November 3 through 7, 2025 as National Veterans Small Business Week in Monument and encourages all citizens, civic groups, and businesses to observe this week with appropriate activities and support for our veteran entrepreneurs. Proclaim the sixth day of October, 2025.
Thank you, I am glad we are doing it before Small Business Week this year instead of after. And the next one we have is Small Business Saturday.
Proclamation recognizing Small Business Saturday 2025. Whereas, Small Business Saturday was first observed in 2010 and has since become a day dedicated to celebrating and supporting small, independent businesses for their vital contributions to our local and national economies. And whereas, the U.S. Small Business Administration has officially recognized Small Business Saturday since 2011 to encourage consumer support of small businesses during the holiday season. And whereas, shopping small helps keep dollars in local economies, support jobs, promotes entrepreneurial diversity, and sustains the unique character of neighborhoods. And whereas, the Pike's Peak Small Business Development Center SBDC and the Tri-Lakes Chamber of Commerce are committed to supporting local, small businesses year, year-round through resources, education, and advocacy. And whereas, the town of Monument recognizes the importance of bolstering and celebrating small business vitality as a foundation of community growth and resilience. Now therefore, Monument Town Council hereby proclaim Saturday, November 29th, 2025, as Small Business Saturday in Monument and encourages all residents, civic organizations, and businesses to observe this day by patronizing small, independent businesses in our community, both in person and online. Proclaim the sixth day of October, 2025.
Thank you to our readers, proclamation readers, they're official. We will now have a presentation from Brandon Eldridge on Small Business Development Center overview.
Good evening, council members, mayor, and town leadership, thank you for letting me be here this evening. My name is Brandon Eldridge, I'm the Executive Director of the Pike's Peak Small Business Development Center. First off, thank you for reading the proclamations and I certainly hope you adopt both of them. I want to start by saying I'm an Army brat who moved here thirty years ago from Kansas. And yes, the Chiefs are playing Monday Night Football right now, so I prioritize this meeting over football, so.
You're not streaming it on your phone.
Well, maybe. So we're pulling up some slides and I just wanted to do a quick overview of the work that we do at the SBDC. I've presented several proclamations over the past couple of years to this council and I thought it was prudent to actually share a little bit of information about the work that we do. Do you guys have the slide deck in front of you there? Okay, very good. Very good, thank you. So the first slide just does an overview of our mission, which as you can see is really just about entrepreneurship. The SBA signals that less than five hundred employees is technically small business, but as we all know, micro businesses are usually around ten or less employees and that's really the bulk of the work that we do at our, at our office. If you go to the next slide, please. So when you come to the SBDC and you work with us, if you spend at least three hours with either an advisor or through one of our classes, you're considered a unique client. So last year, our office served six hundred and ninety-four unique clients. Six hundred and ninety-four businesses spent at least three hours or more. Over fifteen hundred businesses came through the door through either one, two hours or just simply attended a short workshop. That was all done with just four people on staff. So we have a very small but mighty team that does a lot of work. Now, to be fair, we do have forty-one advisors on our team that help, you know, bridge that gap. Last year, we did around two thousand hours of free one-on-one consulting for small businesses in either Teller County or El Paso County combined. Next slide, please. So as you'll see in this next slide, we actually cover a pretty decent geographic footprint. We cover the Pike's Peak region, so we have classes with the monument and up here in Monument with the Tri-Lakes Chamber on a monthly basis. We do go to Woodland Park on a monthly basis, we go to Eastern Plains, we go down to Fountain. We actually work on a TAP program at the academy once a month. And obviously, we were office in Colorado Springs, so we cover both counties. But we're one of fourteen offices in the state and we're one of a thousand across the country. So the SBDC network is pretty broad. I just attended a, a training event in Orlando where over a thousand SBDCs converge and do training and we learn how to serve our clients better. Next slide, please. At the core of our work is about free one-on-one consulting. As I mentioned, last year we did over two thousand hours. My forty-one advisors help administer that and we do everything from business plans, marketing strategies, cybersecurity, you name it, if it's part of your business, we probably help in that. We also help certain industries specifically, we have some programming for childcare, transportation businesses, and various other industries that we specialize in. Next slide, please. I put this slide in here because this is really the core of our work, which is a business plan. We identify where you're at as a business owner, whether you're aspiring, you've been around for a little bit, or maybe you're ready to sell your business. Your business plan is essential to, number one, getting access to capital, helping create a roadmap to where you want to be over the next couple of years. And ultimately, if you're looking to sell that business, how attractive are you to potential buyers? Next slide, please. We also do a lot of events and these events are designed to do a couple of things. Number one, create some networking opportunities in certain industries. And then number two, create curriculum that's, you know, impactful on a one-day event. So the next couple of slides will walk you through some of the big events that we've hosted this year. The first one was our construction forum where we like to host it in the spring so that our subcontractors can have an opportunity to work with our primes and get a chance to connect and hopefully get some summer jobs through this event. Next slide, please. The next event is our Small Business Week celebration where we do five events throughout the week and celebrate the power of, of small business through entrepreneurship. This is a really great week where we get to do a lot of interaction with the community and of course, we did another proclamation for Small Business Week earlier this year with this town council. So thank you so much for adopting that. Next slide, please. I mentioned childcare, this year we had a childcare summit at COS City Hub. We actually will be working with UCCS next year in the College of Education to help serve more of those budding entrepreneurs that want to help provide at-home or center-based childcare services. Next slide, please. We also do a contract expo. As you know, forty-four percent of the local economy is tied to aerospace and defense and there's a lot of contractors and folks that want to work with the DOD and government contracting. So this is a great event for our, another great event for our subs to work with a lot of really great primes. That's an annual event, we actually do it with our CU Boulder SBDC, but also a great event that's statewide. Next slide, please. This year, we ran our inaugural AI Summit where we had eight speakers throughout the day and we had over two hundred people in attendance for this AI Summit. This is a topic or a category rather that is exploding on the scenes. It's really taking over business plans and really making people really think about how they run their business today to create efficiencies. So at the SBDC, we're really leaning into that and helping create some resources and education behind how to use AI in your small business. Next slide, please. If I can approach the bench, I have some flyers here for you. So this is our eighteenth year of having a Veterans Small Business Conference. For the second year in a row, we'll be hosting it at Great Wolf Lodge. This year, we hope to have four hundred businesses in attendance at our event. At least that's what, how many seats I have for lunch, so come have some lunch with us because we're packing the house this year. Last year, we had almost three hundred and fifty folks, so I think it's a pretty reasonable lift for us. Throughout the day, we have seventy resource tables and veteran-owned small businesses that will be selling at the event. So between four hundred participants, seventy tables, fifteen workshops, three keynote speakers, and one Santa Claus, it's going to be a fun day. Yes, I said Santa Claus. Our Santa this year, he's getting a tailor-made suit that's red and green camo and his buttons on the front will have all six military branches represented on his vest. So Santa's going to be there to encourage folks to do some shopping. So this event is going to be on November 7th, you have flyers there in front of you. This is a call to action to say, we want your small businesses to come and participate. Throughout the day, we'll have workshops on how to do government contracting, how to work with the state of Colorado, and simply how to run a small business as a, as a veteran entrepreneur. It's a great day and I will say, you don't have to be a veteran to support veteran entrepreneurship. So even if you didn't serve, we still welcome you and we want you to be part of this wonderful event. Next slide, please. This slide just articulates a lot of the partnerships that we do in the community. You'll notice Tri-Lakes Chamber of Commerce is listed on here. We cannot serve seven hundred businesses a year without community partnership. And this slide, I think, is just powerful and it just speaks to how many partnerships we truly do have in the community. Next slide, please. As I wrap up, I do want to do an honorable mention to the SBA. They are the core grant for all thousand SBDCs across the country in which we do have to find matching funds to receive those. We do have a Colorado District Office, those folks are currently on furlough, so just be aware if you need to reach out to them. But we also have the Office of On Budsmen. So the country is divided into ten regions, we are region eight. Three of the five board members are right here in our community. Next slide, please. This is just a mention that we also have sponsorship programs throughout the year. It really depends on the event that we're hosting or simply just the workshop or how we're serving clients. This is a champion program that allows sponsors to pay it forward and to allow other entrepreneurs to benefit from their sponsorship. Last slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry, and we have our newsletter, which of course, we publish local grants. We publish events that the local chambers are doing and it's a very robust opportunity to connect with SBDC and stay connected to the work that we do. I strongly encourage everybody to subscribe because it does have a really great information throughout it. Now, last slide. If you're interested in participating in any of our classes or taking advantage of free one-on-one consulting, the QR code here simply takes you to our, our website, but it is pikespeaksbdc.org where you can just sign up and then within two to three business days, we'll reach back out and connect you with one of our forty-one advisors. So that's it for us, I don't know if I take questions or if that's sufficient for you folks, but please know that we're very grateful to serve this community, to be part of the Tri-Lakes community and to serve the entrepreneurial spirit for, for folks up here in Monument, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions or comments from council, Brandon?
Okay.
No.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you, guys.
All right, next up, chief. What'd they call him, Officer Reagan? What? It was something they called him, it wasn't chief. Officer. Oh. Commander Luckton.
The officer has people. Well, good evening, thank you for having us out here tonight. I'm going to bring up some conversations we want to talk about tonight on license plate technology integration. I've got Lily Ho is, you can see her on the little screen over to the right waving ashes. She's going to take a couple of these slides to give you the inside baseball, as well as Will Noble sitting here with Flock Safety. I want to explain what we're doing. License plate technology integration and rethinking modern police concepts. You can go to that next slide for me when you're ready. So it is, the transparency is key. The reason I asked Flock Safety to come here is to, to deliver this presentation, to demonstrate the, to the town and to the constituents and the, our town members, the importance of leadership and integrating existing license plate technology and the system here in Monument. This already surrounds the whole town of Monument up and down the Front Range and beyond, so this isn't something new. I'm going to show you on the next slide for me, please. The technology is actually here. Right? And the green arrows will show you every Flock Safety partnership, so they're either public-private cameras that are set up across our Front Range, across Colorado, across most of the states. They're just license plate reading technology, I'll get into that more. But why we want to use Flock is that they have a public-private partnership with cameras that are already at businesses as well. So right now, we have one at Home Depot that Home Depot has on that system. I'm going to be able to show you that as well. But what this does is it allows objective and actionable evidence collection. And I, we came here to show you that it's around us, but then I want to show you what it actually means. So go to the next slide for me, please. So really, this is just showing what I'm really looking to take a picture of. Right? License plates on cameras, on vehicles going up and down highways. We are looking for vehicles that are already been worked on by people, by law enforcement for being wanted, stolen vehicles, stolen plate, wanted, and they're in the system. And that we'd have to be specifically looking for those vehicles that we are putting an inquiry out to be able to get to. Next slide for me. What this is, is really a force multiplier with budgets getting tight in Monument, just like everywhere else. Officers shortages and officers that we weren't able to hire. We're looking to see how we can maximize our efficiency and find strategies that help us to give our, our officers an easier win that they might know that these cameras are simply flagging that a vehicle went by that happens to have a warrant or a vehicle went by that's known to be stolen. Right? Something that direction. And this helps us to be And this helps us to be more efficient with the resources that the town gives to Monument. So go to the next slide for me, please. This really isn't in anyone's backyard. And the reason I'm standing here today is to show you what we are talking about. Is I'm looking as Monument Police Department has some draft locations of where in the future here we would like. If we were able to get the technology and place that technology, where and why we would want to do it. Right? What we are looking for is a lot of the business and locations, the top left, of course, Second Street getting onto the interstate. There is a huge hole right now between I-25, the last camera right now is in Lone Tree. And the next one is just before Colorado Springs off of the interstate. So we have the whole Air Force Academy and who's going to go down in there and do something where we don't have anything? We've got a big blind spot right now for where those cameras would be integrated. Now CDOT does have ways to put them up, they move some around, they can move them, but currently there's no permanently place one there. Right now at 105, you might have already seen that the El Paso County Sheriff's Office has one in the county. Right? We had nothing to do with that, just happens to be there. But it, it helps us a lot with looking for any of the traffic that's going down 105. When we're looking for vehicle break ins or people who are going into our neighborhoods, accosting our citizens, stealing from their cars. You're going to see more about that. But really what I want to talk about is that bottom slide. Down near our Pilot Travel Center, our QuickTrip, our Valero. A lot of the people who are coming in and out of our communities and committing crimes and doing criminal acts. Want that quick entrance and exits to get in and out of our QuickTrip location. Having cameras at those locations on the road, simply leaving, coming in and leaving will help flag some of those for us to know what we have. When we have technology in those places to see which vehicles are coming in and out. The same with just to the east there on Jackson Creek Parkway and Baptist. We're looking to get everything going into those neighborhoods or going to the Walmart or going back down from that Home Depot. Where are they running after they go and shoplift from the Walmart, shoplift from the Kohl's, shoplift from our, our Home Depot? Where are they going? And then tracking these vehicles to see where they end up if we can't follow them once we have good technology that way. So this isn't looking into anyone's backyard. I'm not looking to look into anyone's backyard and it's got some very specific parameters I'll get into. Lily's going to take the next couple of slides for me and then I'll be back with you after that.
Commander, on that slide with Baptist Road on it, what are those other two icons representing?
They're, they're just different camera systems that go both directions. So they're gonna, you need a bigger camera that's higher up to get three lanes because of how wide the lanes are. You bet.
Hello, CD leaders. It is a pleasure to be here with you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Terrific. With this slide, this image right here, this is a really good example of the type of image that would be captured through our cameras. It is the photo of a rear of a vehicle capturing the make, the model and, and, and the license plate. I want to be clear that this does not take a photo of who is driving the car. There is no other information about the vehicle or the vehicle owner or really the passenger, anything else about the vehicle. It is just the photo of the back of the vehicle for its license plates. And if there is a vehicle that is on this hot list that Commander Upton had mentioned that was registered, say the, say your team. Had identified a vehicle that was perhaps stolen or involved in a crime, it would be in our database. And if, if that vehicle passed by one of our cameras. You would be notified within seconds, under a minute of that vehicle passing by. And like Commander Upton says, it is actionable evidence. And, and it's something that the police staff can take action on. And objective. There is, these cameras are on a fixed location. They do not track the vehicle continuously. It is a photo specifically of a time and place. And as the planner mentioned, that these would be focused on public roadways. And for law enforcement, these are integrated for all of these real time alerts. So like the, like the image of the neighboring cameras in around the area of Monument. If there was a vehicle that was on one of our neighboring cities hot list and it drove by Monument. If you chose to share that data with them, they would be able to see that that vehicle is in Monument. Uh, next slide. And these are again, real time alerts. And here is an example of what our screenshots might look like. And although we do not, we are not required to, we are following the highest form of security possible. We are in compliance with the FBI's NCIC and NICMIC. The NICMIC is the organization that runs Amber Alerts. And next, next slide, please. And what's also really neat about our technology is that we have a vehicle fingerprint technology that identifies the vehicles. As you can imagine, in many incident instances, you may not remember the entire. Vehicle license plate number, maybe just a partial plate from an eyewitness. Or perhaps the color of a car and something identifiable, but not perhaps the specific make or model. With our technology, a witness can say, can give a partial plate. And maybe just the color of a vehicle and say there was a bumper sticker on it. Our technology would allow you to search for those I specifically identified properties of the vehicle. And that is our specific technology around vehicle fingerprints. Next slide, please. Now these, we were built really with privacy in mind. The city of Monument owns the data and these images. You guys get to do whatever you want with it. You may share it with your neighbors, you can keep it to yourself. Us as a company, Flock Safety, we would never be able to share your images or tap into it. We are not in the business of selling information or data either. After 30 days, the cameras and our, and our cloud servers would automatically delete any of the images captured by default. And again, we are storing our, these images with the highest end to end encryption. It is FBI CGIS qualified SOC 2, SOC 3, iOS. We have just the highest regulations for security HIPAA regulations as well. Uh, next slide.
Thank you for that Lily. So really this is built with that transparency in mind. What I wanted to show you is we already have policy integrated within our policy manual for how you would go about using automated license plate reader. The searches are all recorded. So I'm not just going in and searching for that really cute blonde girl that just went through and putting in her plate. Because there's going to be a record of every single stop and the reason that we put that in and a reason that is. Auditable and visible, that can be internally visible and externally visible should the town choose to set it up that way. At Monument, one of the things I love the most is how much support we get from this community. I think in return, we give them the biggest transparency of any law enforcement agency anywhere is to show you what we're doing and why we're trying to do it. I want to show you a couple, go to the next slide for me. A couple of examples of what we've been able to do just with the Home Depot public, private partnership. What we did is they turned on their operating system for us, which Flock OS itself is in itself a really great technology. It flags things coming through. This is one of the crimes back in May 16th that it flagged for our officers that there was a stolen vehicle in the parking lot. The suspect was in there with a bunch of stolen stuff going up and down the highways, had come into our Home Depot. Our cops got the flag for it, boxed him in, his car is full of, of a lot of stolen stuff. He of course didn't want to surrender, made it a really tough time, but he couldn't get out. And he was in the store at the time stealing from the Home Depot when we got him and took him to CJC. Right? This is one of those that we did locally just recently, once the cameras were turned on for Monument to see. Go to the next slide for me. These are the things we've done with that camera, just in the time we've had, without having our own cameras on roadways where they'd be most pro productive. These are just coming from that parking lot, five felony arrests from the Kohl's area, we covered the three stolen license plates. And we found a missing person by tracking where that person had gone through, through the town using data that was captured in the system. Was able to find one of the missing people. This isn't something new that we're doing. We are kind of the last to the party, to be honest, is El Paso, Douglas, Castle Rock and Colorado Springs. All have these cameras and integrated technology. They're working smarter, not harder, and we're trying to get under the same to try and keep our community safer. One of the biggest ones I want to point out is we had a, a bunch of criminal theft, criminal trespass theft CTAs. Where they went to the autos and they go and check all the doors and you get it on ring cameras and stuff. Well, we had that in September 18th and 19th. And they went up and went through a lot of our neighborhoods, you might've seen our posts on that. And we asked for video and cameras from it. Well, these kids are smart enough to put up their hoods, usually wearing masks, aren't looking directly at it. We don't have facial recognition software here, but at three or four AM when they're going in and out. I can guarantee you, we'd have seen a plate if I had cameras in these different locations. And I don't have a lot to go on because we didn't have that talk, technology in place. And it wasn't very productive getting those cameras from the ring. But if we had these license plate readers, it would help us immensely in being able to have actionable intelligence either now. Or later to catch them when they're found in another neighboring community as well. A lot of, go to the next slide for me. These are real quick examples of things that other agencies around us have done. Edgewater PD had 45 days, they got 12 stolen vehicles in their first 45 days of getting it through there. Now it is Edgewater, right? Where they might have a higher level of theft than we do. But this will also help us with our intelligence led policing model for Monument. What is going on? What crime is going through here? What are we not seeing that we don't know that we don't know? And I want to know what we don't know so that I can get to it and help make this town safe, safer than ever. Go to the next slide for me. Solved an identity theft out of Salida where they're looking for a person who was stealing credit cards, going to the ATMs. They use the license plates and they were able to enter the partial plate number and gave them suspect information. Were able to get the suspect who is a habitual traffic offender arrested as well. Go to the next slide. This is for a silver alert. One of the silver alerts in O'Fallon, Missouri was really that you put in, we had a missing person here this last week. And you put this into the system and they had that person by the Flock LPR within a few hours of that. She's reported at 3:30. The daughter reported her missing at 3:45, the Flock LPR systems head on where that vehicle is, sending cops to where the missing person is. And the last slide I want to show you there is a child abduction where we have this on an Amber Alert. Where we're looking for any of those kinds of things where we had that out of Georgia. The Amber Alert went out at 12:33. The search, we had that vehicle where we had to put in the parameters because now we had an actionable crime. We have a vehicle of interest, they put it in at 101, the vehicle was an hour and a half later found. And then they were able to track that vehicle. Notice it's not immediate, it's only sending flags, it's not like it catches you. You still have to have the officers there to be able to do it. And then the baby got reunited with mother. So in summary, I'll give Lily the opportunity as well. And what I really want to talk about well with that is. Big Brother is here and we are all in agreement that it's already been around us, but we use it ethically. We use it correctly and we use it transparently and that I'd be more than happy to show anybody. And that's exactly why I'm standing here before you today is talking about something we're looking to do so it's not a surprise to anybody in the town. Will, do you have anything, I miss anything? Coming up.
How's it going everyone, mayor, council members, town leadership? My name's Will Nobles, based in Denver. I've been at Flock for about two and a half years now. And have seen the impact that this technology has made for communities and law enforcement agencies across the state. This goes beyond just, you know, this is obviously a very impactful tool for law enforcement. It can also be used for departments like Public Works who are here tonight. We're collecting traffic counts, traffic analytics, determining what types of vehicles, what types of states are traveling through town. It's a very impactful technology and just understanding who is coming in to Monument to cause harm. Like they said, all of these are those bad actors on NCIC lists that alert these guys when they need to respond accordingly. And I'm, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions if y'all have any as well.
And does anyone have any questions?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. All right, go for it.
Council?
Okay.
Let him have it.
Well, I got a host of questions.
Sure.
Number one. Elephant in the room. Cost.
Eighteen thousand dollars a year annually, including the installation of the cameras that we're looking to put in.
Does that, how many cameras are we, or are we looking? Cause the town is still growing. So are we looking at initial installation and then we're looking for expansion after that?
Correct. And then now you can do that, I think what we're talking is how many cameras? We were talking, six cameras total.
Six cameras for eighteen thousand dollars, is that, is that, so that's, is that a contract? Does that include the maintenance on these and?
So this is like a subscription service. So we come out, we do all the maintenance, all of the permitting, installation, everything.
So then after the install, after the eighteen thousand dollar installation, then what is the yearly cost?
So it's eighteen thousand annually and then we have discounted a hundred percent of the installation costs.
Okay, now. What?
I take you back on that. I'm assuming this is cloud based?
Cloud based.
Is there additional subscription costs?
It's all included with the three thousand dollars per camera.
Okay, so it's three thousand per camera, which gives us the eighteen.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So we're talking about the, the, this, your company is up in the Denver area and it's down in the Springs area. So integration doesn't seem to be a problem. However, what is El Paso County doing since they own a good piece of real estate? With the highways and roadways that are, that are surround the town of Monument to?
In fact, this is to tie in with what they are already doing with their real time operations center that their El Paso County is standing up. They are already integrating this technology. So we're trying to work in partnership with those cameras so that we get not only what Flock Safety has there. But then we have access to all of El Paso County's cameras as well. Giving us that intelligence led policing model across all of El Paso County and for Monument.
Okay. Now, you used and. You used the famous word that I really, I understand, but I hate to use it because everyone has a different definition.
Sure.
When you say transparency. So. What is the ability for resident to request to actually see what you are? Taking cam, uh, camera shots or being used for?
So it gives it a list of, it's a searchable list. And Lily, you could probably talk to this better than I can on what you were telling me about the integration and what could be front facing on the town website.
And I, I can actually take that. So we can actually build and we have this for like Castle Rock and other agencies nearby. It's called a transparency portal that you can put on your public website for the town of Monument. And it'll show, hey, this is what the cameras are doing, this is what it doesn't do. This is who we share with, this is how many hot list searches were performed over the past 30 days. Obviously the data is going to be deleted after that 30 day period. But it gives you a, a kind of a, your entire website that we can customize and share whatever information you guys would like to see.
Okay. And does, two quest, two more questions. The, with this camera system, is this going to automatically tie in to what we have existing in our? Police vehicles or do we have to do any upgrading? And cost to that effect as well?
They give us access to the operating system, which they turned on for us early to see how effective it would be here. So that, those cameras are already integrated. So it's literally giving them the names, our email addresses where they are and having that app up on the computers where it flags for our officers who are working.
Okay. And my last question is, are there other? Okay. And my last question is, are there other competing companies that do similar service and have that, has that been looked at and why, why did you pick this company?
Uh, Axon has a, a similar kind of service that they do there. The reason that we are looking at going this way is it's what our partners have chosen to go with and we'd get the most bang for the buck. That they have, after doing their own research, they also chose to go with flock safety on the two, twofold on the cameras and the technology and the fusis of their technology on the, uh, what's it called? Their operating system, the flock OS. The flock OS is integratable between all of the different departments was the biggest part of that. But also gives them the private public partnership that they are embracing right now, like Home Depot. If we get more businesses who are interested in having more security in their neighborhoods and they buy a flock camera, they can give us access to it. It makes us a stronger police department by knowing what's going on. And those businesses have the option of buying the technology and putting a camera on their own property. Things that were considered both in Colorado Springs, El Paso County and in Castle Rock around us. So we're supporting what we are already seeing on the front range to try and get, uh, the most, the best use of our intelligence-led policing council member.
Okay. Last question is, uh, just to tie back into the cost, this comes out of the police funds or is this coming out of another fund?
No, sir. This would be a, a cost that we're trying to implement from the police department.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question. Somebody I know in the Springs got a ticket in the mail that captured their license plate and does this technology do that?
No, ma'am.
Really?
That is not what we're doing at all. We are looking for the crime data. This is not a traffic camera. It's not a traffic system for writing citations for a red light running. This is nothing like that. We aren't looking at that at this point in here. We are simply trying to find out what the crime patterns are, what we're doing.
But will it ever be that way though?
No, and, and it's because we don't tie into any DMV like database or anything like that. It is all only images of the backside of the vehicle.
Um, I'd like to go back to you, the, the contract. What's the contract term? So at eighteen thousand dollars per year for six cameras, which could obviously uh, become more. Um, is this an annual that renews every year or is there a, is there a term uh, that could go longer so that we're locked into a rate?
Yeah. So we can do anything from one to five years. Uh, right now we have it on a twenty-four month contract. It's kind of our standard. Um, it's an annual billing basis, but we will not bill anything until the first camera is actually installed.
Well, it's good because we can't do more than one year at a time billing anyway. So the slippery slope is that you are, you offer a whole host of other things that I'm curious if the police department is looking at. So the gunshot detection system. There's flock Nova, which I've read up a little bit on. Is this something that we're, we're looking at, uh, the other components within the flock safety? Uh, offerings?
Well, I'll tell you, I have not brought any of those technologies to the chief for anything. What we are trying to do is be a good integrating partner right now, get in on the ground floor with flock to have cameras in places that they don't have visibility now. Um, I'm really concerned about our residents who are going through some of these blind spots and I want to put cameras in there to see what we could find when we were talking about that intelligence-led policing and tell me what I don't know, I don't know. Do I see it evolving to that? Not in the way that Monument does things incredibly thoughtfully and incredibly slowly because they want to make sure how it's going to be integrated and used. I think we're at that spot where everyone around us has used it. We're looking to add a few cameras to see what we have here, but any of those kinds of things. We, we came just to show you what it's really looking like and what we're trying to do with it so that there was no surprises that our citizens could go back and watch the video when they saw those going up and, and know what it would be.
Okay. And then my last question, because I've, I know some people in this industry. Is there any value to, or do we know of other local agencies that are using, um, drone as a first responder technology? I, I mean, I know that certainly for stranded hikers, um, it, it allows for the drones to be the first responder and, and tag people based on geo coordinates, which is certainly great and life-saving, uh, events, especially if someone, you know, is up in Mount Herman and, and gets stranded, but they're able to now SOS from their, from their phone via satellite. Is this something that is being done by surrounding agencies or is this something that would benefit Monument Fire, Monument Police, USAF, uh, the county?
Yes, sir. The next time you see me for the presentation, it's going to be about drone for first responder. Uh, we are trying to integrate that looking a lot like Colorado Springs and El Paso. We're also talking to them of, uh, getting camera systems or drones that would actually be tied to them through their real-time operations center or the real-time crime center so that we have that exact technology. And that's also on the plate of the other thing I'm working on the other side of this as well, mayor.
Okay. Well, actually, I don't know about the rest of the council, but my concern is this, this is a cost center object, uh, item, right? There's no, since there's no tickets being given for or citing of, of, of breaking the speed, for example, like a speed camera would. The, the purpose of this is to participate in a larger network of enforcement of bad actors. So we would spend the three thousand per camera, which you know, from the grand scheme of things, it, it seems like there's some value there, but we don't get anything in return other than putting bad guys away.
Correct. And maybe crushing some of the crime that we haven't been able to solve by having actionable intelligence by using those camera systems. If we gave them from the September motor vehicle break-in, we had a few plates and those were found in El Paso County or Colorado Springs and tied to it within that thirty days, we might've been able to make an actionable case to go after a warrant for the young men that were doing that if we'd had some vehicle information. So that's my hope with it is to show you, uh, my concern is whether we're going to have enough time for all of the things it might give our officers, to be completely honest, is that there's, there could be a lot of things we don't even know are going on. And so that's been a concern of the chief as well as careful what you ask for, because it might find a whole lot more intelligence-led placing that then has to be dealt with here as well. And we're cognizant of that of it's not okay to not know what you don't know.
Okay, so as you integrate this system, because you're, you're teaming up with other municipalities. So you have one of these going southbound on, on I twenty-five off a second. But if, if this, if this got alerted, it would get alerted to you or get alerted to Colorado Springs, I suppose, everybody that's on this network.
Anybody on that system that it would look that it went through a checkpoint or that one spot? Then we'd be looking at cameras down the line and every direction to see if we could find a tracking pattern for that to be able to find where it went. So all it would tell us is the vehicle that you were wanted in NCIC was at this location at this time and date. And you'd have to use your intelligence as a law enforcement officer to start figuring out, how do I track where that might've been coming from? Where it's going and where's the next camera system we might be able to look into? By calling down to the real-time operations center at El Paso County or the real-time crime center with Colorado Springs and tell them we had a flag if they'd start looking for it, then we're using that integration of their OS system from flock as well as their OS systems with any other cameras that are there for them to be looking for that same vehicle. So we become a better Pike's Peak Regional Law Enforcement Partner. Moving forward of not having this blind spot between the Springs and Castle Rock.
Okay. Cause, cause if you saw whatever you got alerted to something going southbound I twenty-five, I assume you're probably not going to hop in a car and go chase whoever it is. Um, but if you had an alert at Home Depot, you're probably going to try to get over there as quickly as possible to see what's going on.
Sure. Is that? Jackson Creek and Baptist Road, I'm going to know where they're going or I'm going to see my one oh five in Jackson.
Yeah. How, how real time are the alerts and the updates? To, I mean, because it sounds like a lot of this is going to be seen hindsight, right? Uh, there's, there's a vehicle that went through the system that got tagged. How quickly is this being processed and, and the message is being delivered to the various agencies?
Yeah. So they're getting these alerts within seconds. So it can go to their cell phone on their mobile app, the MDT of their vehicle, uh, SMS text, email, uh, but it's within seconds. And the way that they've kind of positioned the cameras is they're going to have, you know, some type of lead time with a lot of these cameras to be set up and be able to, uh, you know, potentially go after the, the bad actor. That's, that's how we have it set up today.
Yeah, I, I can see chief's comment about be careful what you wish for. We're going to need, we're going to need newer cars with more maintenance because you guys will be chasing.
We have them.
And he already wants, he already wants more officers that can.
No, no, I would say that we, we've actually delayed this presentation for quite a while until we felt we were comfortably staffed to even talk about it. Um, I think we're right on the doorstep of doing that. Um, to the comment about putting people in jail, a hundred percent, that's what we want to do, but it's really going to increase our clearance rate of our cases. Um, and, and a lot of these, we don't, you don't necessarily have to respond quickly to it, right? So in the case of these burglaries from vehicle or motor vehicle, whatever they call it misdemeanor here. I don't necessarily have to catch you that night, but I do need to catch your vehicle, right? So, um, I was the victim of a motor vehicle burglary last night at my house. I wish there was a flock camera on my street because my cameras, even though I have them all over my house, are not recording license plates, right? You're seeing profiles of vehicles go by. Um, so that's what I think John nailed. You both did a great job, all the three of you, but, um, we do want to be better partners. We do have El Paso County that's putting a lot of money into the region. Um, and there are dispatch centers, so that helps us too. Um, about the other, um, things we can do with flock. This isn't like a Trojan horse. We're not trying to bring it in and then pop these other things. It's not even on the radar. But quite honestly, knowing you, all of you in the community, we're going to have that conversation before we ever try to flip any switches to do anything different.
One last quick question. Um, are you guys going to post? Should we go through with this? Like did, are there going to be signs that say, you know, photography? Cause sometimes at, in the intersection, there's a sign that says there's a camera present. Is that going to be?
Reason they're doing that is for state love of having to notify that there's a automated traffic citation system through a third party that's contracted company that's literally taking the picture, mailing you a ticket. It's a civil violation.
Okay.
So they're required to put those up by state statute because of the traffic laws involved with them.
Okay.
We are not looking to write anybody a citation on anything, therefore it wouldn't need.
We don't have to do that.
It's a passive system.
Okay, thank you.
I very much appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. All right. Well, I appreciate that, uh, the amount of work that went into this before they, they brought it to us. So that's great. Um, all right. So now we will get to our only ordinance for the night. Uh, sixteen twenty twenty-five, an ordinance approving a real property transfer from El Paso County and entered into an IGA accepting obligations related there too.
Good evening.
Good evening. I warned you that I'd be back with a similar case. So this is the, uh, we're, um, an ordinance, um, for the crossing of the, uh, Santa Fe Trail um, by the project down known as San, Tarazo Baja Development or AKA Santa Fe Park. Uh, so I'm presenting to you tonight, um, a little quick background to the, the project down there and then, uh, it, it's the same exact process that we went through with Conexus. So, uh, ordinance number ten, twenty twenty approved a preliminary PUD for the Santa Fe Park development. It's a sixty-four, uh, just under a sixty-four and a half acre commercial development, uh, light, uh, commercial and, and industrial down at the northwest corner of Baptist and Old Denver Road. Uh, the, actually that'd be the northeast corner. Uh, they, uh, there was a resolution twenty-eight, twenty-five that came before you earlier this year for a final platform, what's now called the Tarazo Baja Commercial Development, which reduced the number of lots, um, of, of that development from twenty-six down to eight lots. Um, and also made way for the Tribe View Metropolitan District's new administrative building, uh, currently under construction today is, is you're driving down Old Denver Road. The, uh, there are two crossings. Um, I think you might be able to see those on the screen now on the, on the Santa Fe Trail runs along the east side of Old Denver Road. Uh, there are two streets, um, that are going to be crossing this, uh, uh, the, uh, um, the, uh, the, the Santa Fe Trail, which is owned by El Paso County. Uh, those two roads are on the north end where Tribe, Tribe View is, is, uh, Baja, uh, Baja Drive and then to the south is La Campaña, uh, Drive. Um, the Santa Fe Trail was developed in nineteen eighty-three with a federal land and water conservation fund. Uh, condition upon the, condition upon the property being maintained and accessible for public recreation use. Uh, so, um, as we did with Conexus, we want to maintain and protect the, the use of, uh, the Santa Fe Trail, even when a road might cross it. So in detail, um, in similar to what we did last times, we, um, we worked with the county to, uh, um, to delineate the, uh, crossing of, uh, the Santa Fe Trail by those two roads, uh, created very specific legal area that, um, would then be, um, be transferred from the county to, um, to the town for our business of having a road crossing it. Um, and, um, and, and ultimately, uh, create a safe passage for anyone who's on the Santa Fe Trail. So there'll be a crosswalk um, as well as, uh, an extended con, um, concrete sidewalk, uh, to the north and to the south of the, of the crosswalk. Similar to, uh, what connects us, uh, very limited, uh, very limited maintenance requirements there. We already do maintenance of the, of the landscape in that area. Um, we'd be working with Tribe View, our, our partner in that area to take care of and maintain other road in the, in that crossing. So there's very little risk to doing so. Um, and it does open up this business park, uh, for, for development. Um, just in detail on, this is a deed to transfer the subject property, uh, which included a, a notice of a use restriction and, uh, that the town will be, um, be required to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with El Paso County. The, uh, the use restrictions, uh, as I described before, are to maintain public outdoor recreation use along the trail. Um, and it binds the property into perpetuity and will include any future transfer of subject property. Um, compliance, um, is required as well for that deed restriction. Um, in accordance with, uh, the state of Colorado, the United, uh, United States Department of Interior, National Park Service, um, which have all been confirmed by letter, uh, of this, um, of this change, uh, on June second, twenty twenty-five. Uh, stewardship is a condition of that, uh, the, the funding, uh, El Paso County and the town have entered into an IGA acknowledging and accepting the, uh, compliance responsibilities. Uh, El Paso County actually approved, uh, their portion of the IGA on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. So that's what's before you tonight. Uh, and the acceptance of the subject property to the town, as I described before, uh, to, uh, to allow for the connection of these two roads across the, the trail. Um, I think I also, um, an interesting note that the developer is going to be doing some improvements, um, in the, uh, uh, the parking lot that's, uh, down by La, La Campaña. Uh, there's a parking lot and then also an extension to that parking lot for, uh, for the county to store uh, or to place temporarily gravel and so on to continue maintaining the rest of the trail. Um, so tonight we're asking for, uh, you to approve ordinance number sixteen twenty twenty-five, which is an ordinance approving the, uh, real property transfer from El Paso County and entering into the IGA with, uh, the, the county um, accepting obligations related there too. Any questions?
I have the same question I had last time. Um, Tribe View. So you say you will be working with Tribe View, but there's conflict here because part of that's in the Tribe View Metro, well, that all is in Tribe View Metro District, but um, I just want to make sure that it's all included as far as the maintenance goes so that we don't have this one little tiny little piece we have to maintain while they're maintaining all the rest of it.
It, it'll, um, be part of the same conversation we're going to have with, for the Conexus cross, um, crossings, but this is way simpler. Uh, Conexus, we actually, um, because of the, uh, the diversion of Old Denver Road, there's going to be a place where you, our, our, our snowplow might, might turn left or might turn right or might have to do a U-turn. This one's very simple. This is either going to be, uh, uh, this will be, uh, a Tribe View truck actually entering in, uh, going to its own facility and coming out the other side. So this should be a much simpler, uh, uh, discussion with Tribe View, but, uh, we're going to have that same conversation. Uh, as we're trying to work out, as we're working out the details for the Conexus site.
Okay. And you think there's any issues with that at all?
Um, I don't think so. I think we're actually in a pretty positive, um, and, uh, we're moving in a positive direction with Tribe View being able to communicate with them and, uh, and just set up expectations early on. So I would hope to have something formal. Um, at least at the, uh, town manager's office, uh, so that we can. um, at least at the, uh, town manager's office, uh, so that we can, um, have something to hold to, uh, to both parties to make sure things are done right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we've gone through, um, before the discussion. I, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that we have some guests in the audience tonight. We have several from one of the local universities, as well as one of two members from D thirty-eight or one, right? Two. I, I just wanna find out if, if this is making sense to you, what was going on, if you understand what we're trying to do here. The Santa Fe Trail is not owned by the town of Monument, but it runs all the way through. And so because of, of that, we have to have an agreement with the county. They want us to take over maintenance of a small section of that trail. Because it, it's getting developed around it. The trail itself is not changing. That will never, that will never happen, but, um, these are the kind of things that we do up here, uh, when it comes to land use. If, if any of you have any questions, we can, you can ask Dan the man right there and he'll fill you in. Yeah, it is a public hearing item, right? All right, well, thank you, Dan. So this is a public hearing item, which means we are gonna open it up to the public to speak either for or against this ordinance. Um, is there anybody who is here from the public that would like to speak for or against the ordinance? Okay, nobody here? Anybody online, Will?
Raise mayor.
Okay, then we'll bring it back to, um, well, we're gonna close the public hearing item then, and we will bring it back for, to the council for either further discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion if nobody has anything to discuss. All right. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number sixteen dash twenty twenty-five and ordinance approving a real property transfer from El Paso County and entering into an intergovernmental agreement, accepting obligations related there too.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Erickson? She's been waiting all night.
Take your life in hands.
That motion passes seven to zero. All right, next up, we have, um, appointments to the Economic Development Negotiations Committee.
Oh, good evening, council. Um, as you know, we are working on an economic development project. Um, and things are moving along well, and so we would like to have two members of council to be part of the committee working with us on the negotiations with this company. Um, and then we'll bring any agreement back to the entire council, but for the sake of negotiations, it would be easier to have two members rather than the whole council for this particular project.
Okay, um, I volunteer. Uh, is there anybody else who would like to sit on?
Love to.
Okay, there's two. Is there anybody else who would like to do it?
Can't have three, can you?
Sorry, what?
Can't have three.
No. Otherwise we have to call.
Yeah, that's a call.
And you can, anybody got an issue with?
Go for it.
All right, I'll be in touch, um, as we move forward with the project.
A good life decision.
Come back with a shield or on it.
Yikes. Okay, then.
Call orders.
All right, we are now, uh, up to public comment, um, for items that are not on the agenda. Individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes. Is there anybody here in town hall that would like to make a public comment? Mr. Howe, come on down.
No one, no one at all? No, no comment, no.
I heard that. Here he is again.
He's got a new book.
Yes, yes.
John Howe, eight, eight, zero, Beacon Light Road, number nine, Monument, Colorado. Gotta read the right notes. So, and I'd love to acknowledge all the individual people who are here as, the, the students. Thank you all for coming. Thank, good evening to everybody, our council, Mr. Mayor, town manager and all the staff. Once again, I want to thank the council for their willingness to serve the town of Monument. It takes a lot of time and dedication. You and the staff are facing some troubled times, but as a citizen, I trust you will work together and the dedicated staff to put Monument back to the forefront as the stable and enviable town for not only living, but shopping and dining. I also want to thank, uh, the town, the council and the manager, previous manager for supporting Michael Weinfeld and myself as we worked on the cemetery and the book, which has sold almost the two hundred copies that were ordered. It doesn't pay for the whole town because there is a percentage, but we do direct people to cover treasures. I want to thank all of you who did come for the signing. We sold sixty-nine books in those two hours, the, the book signing that we had, uh, a while back. So it was, it's just wonderful. And since that time, the fact that somebody who on the council suggested we write this book, which we were happy and it worked a lot to do it. We've been summoned by numerous groups to give a presentation. So Michael has put together a slideshow and we do our notes and we present. We've done twice to the Kuanis and this Friday, we're going to the Tri-Lakes Women's Club and they're expecting eighty women to be at, uh, let's see, Bear Dancing Golf Club in Larkspur.
You're gonna be, you're gonna be dancing?
I don't know. I'm not gonna be bear, but anyway. And I wore this, I know you didn't recognize me because I didn't have my Hawaiian shirt. I found this in my drawer and I said, the first time I've ever worn it, I thought it would be appropriate for tonight. I'd like it. All of you, thank you for all your doing. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Howe? Is there anybody else who would like to make a public comment? Mr. Jerka? Yes, sir. All right.
Yeah, my name is Otis Jerka. I'm at one twenty-seven Wheat Ridge Street in Palmer Lake, Colorado.
Should I gabble him?
Please don't.
We love Otis. Yep, he is well loved.
That's true.
Anyway, I just want to take a, a few moments to, you know, as, as somebody you may know, I'm a trustee of Palmer Lake and we've had some contentious times and uh, of course, over the last few months since I took office in November, I've come to know some of the council members here in Monument to welcome me with open arms most of the time. But I just want to say I appreciate you guys standing by Palmer Lake, even though at times we're not the best neighbors. We say bad things about Monument or Woodmore or whatnot, but you've kinda, we are part of the Tri-Lakes area and it's important to all of us. And, you know, I've already started reaching out with, uh, a couple of our new trustees is, how can we work better with Monument? You know, I, I did corner your public works guy, talk about a water connection. You know, to help maybe service our, part of our town that's on wells and maybe you guys can provide water for us and, you know, the safety flock, uh, perked in my head is we, we can't afford it, but maybe we can get a deal where any alerts get sent to our police department. I'm gonna talk our police chief about that, so. You know, it's always good to come here to learn some new things because, you know, we're, we're a little bit smaller and we don't have as much money in the budget to get the new shiny thing sometimes, so. I want, I appreciate your all efforts and supporting Palmer Lake.
Thank you, and, and I just wanna, I just want to say one thing because there was some pretty contentious times in this town not long ago, and we worked through all of that. Um, a lot of it was getting, you know, different council up here and working together as a team, and I see a lot of that happening in real time with, uh, Palmer Lake, so, um, good times are coming ahead and I wish the best for you.
Yeah, there, there is light at the end of the tunnel. Not one of these, they go really slow. Um, is there any public comments online, Will?
There are no hands raised, mayor.
All right, uh, if there's no one else that would like to make a public comment, we will close public comment. And we move up to the future agenda item authorizations. Is there anything that you have?
I just wanted to see, so I had originally sent you an email about our next town hall meeting, um, and I had it as November twelfth, and then I realized when I was talking to council member Fiorito, that is council, our planning commission night. So I'm now suggesting that, uh, November thirteenth is our next town hall meeting. So, um, just wanted to give you that heads up and I'll also follow up with an email. Um, and we're looking at a potential location, if not here, potentially the YMCA, but, um, we need to talk with the YMCA about that.
Okay, I mean, it's a Thursday instead of a Wednesday.
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
November thirteen.
Thirteen.
November thirteenth on my calendar is a Thursday.
Oh, sorry.
Wrong November?
What year, what year are you in?
Uh, I just have no idea.
Question.
I just bounce around.
I'm good for that date for the, for what it's worth.
Yeah.
Well, we've lost two people already.
All right, so there's some guesses, some no's, so I'll kinda, we'll find a, we'll figure out a location and then if that date doesn't work, we'll come back, so.
The fourteenth does not work for me.
Got it.
And, and.
I wouldn't want to do it on a Friday night anyways.
Just saying, okay. Uh, any other future agenda items?
That is the only one for tonight.
Is this, this, you won't, we won't be seeing you at the next meeting. Are you sure you have nothing else that you want to authorize?
I am sure that at this moment, there is nothing else we need to authorize. However, next meeting, somebody else might ask.
Got my eye on you. Okay, um, we'll move on to council comments. Any council comments tonight?
Yes, I have two. One, um, so, um, I'm noticing more and more, uh, folks, at least in, in my area and my development, parking on the street. Uh, I understand that there's a new law, state law, uh, downward directed, those are always efficient, um, where parking is now allowed on the street. My concern is for the public works, especially as we're heading into winter. Um, people are getting quite comfortable parking on the street and maybe they don't understand or realize, hopefully they do care, uh, that parking on the street affects the, the plowing crews especially. Um, and I do know that we have, maybe not an ordinance, but a, I think it is an ordinance or a, a policy where twenty-four hours prior to an expected, uh, storm that we're at, we ask residents to park elsewhere, not on the streets, unless they want their vehicle plowed. Um, not a good thing learned from experience. Plowing my own vehicle, never mind, um, had to sleep on the couch for that one, um, but, um, so if we can kinda remind folks to, yeah, it, it's great that you can park in the streets, but in the winter, strongly encourage not to do so, especially if we're expecting winter storms, because that really affects the, the plowing crews.
Especially if we're gonna change the policy from two inches to anything above.
Yeah.
Because obviously more snow means.
Yes.
Larger snow piles. I think, I think the signs, the sound, the signs down in my neighborhood from the town say two inches, they'll, they'll be rolling. I don't know what you have in yours.
Uh, Tribeview has a whole, um, policy on how often they'll, they'll plow based on how much they're, what, where they do and, and, uh, priority, streets as well. Uh, but even so, especially the side streets that get iced over and then you've got plows coming through, park at your own risk. I would rather that people not park on the streets and allow the snowplow crews to free rein of the streets and, and clear the streets. Anyway, that's all I had.
Yes, a couple of things, and I'll piggyback on that. I'm, I'm gonna tell a, tell a short story, um, in our. What, what? Okay, uh, we have residents in our area that park on the street. One of them heard that she didn't want her car to be plowed in, so she parked on the lawn. Swear to God, swear. The second one is we've got somebody whose vehicle is there all the time, constantly. He got told in the last big snowstorm, you know, you might want to move, he went out, didn't start. So, you know, there, there are some asides to, to some of that. Um, I would like to, to say something about, um, our neighbors, Palmer Lake. I was very sad to hear that, um, Amy resigned. I think she's, she was a tremendous asset. Um, you know, we attend your meetings as well and she was, she was, she was, um, a voice of reason along with you and now a couple of others. Um, and I just, I, I just wish there was something that we could say or do to help. And I know there's probably not because I, we all get it. But if there's anything we can do or say, I hope you'll reach out.
Okay, I have a couple of things.
Okay.
No stories, no stories. Um, I had, uh, a week ago, the opportunity to ex, um, attend, um, Colorado, Colorado State University Extension Office, um, kind of welcome, this is what we do thing. Um, I apologize, I thought everybody got an invite to that and I found out I was the only one. But, um, it was actually quite, um, quite a pretty good experience. So there's a lot of things that the Extension Office can do for us. Um, uh, for example, they have, uh, horticulture classes. They have, they have, you can get your yard tested, you can get the soil tested, forgive me. So they have the tools there to do all of those things. So, um, if anyone has any questions about the extensions, uh, Extension Office, let me know. Um, also met with, um, some folks there and I'm, I'm trying to plug in, um, their dietitian with, um, a place to have classes in Monument. He's been trying to plug in with the library district, but the library district hasn't returned any phone calls, so. Um, trying to plug him in either with, uh, the chamber, um, or somewhere where he can have classes, uh, possibly even Woodmore Barn potentially. Um, four H, so four H is really big in Southern Colorado. Um, they've no longer, since COVID, everything just kinda fell apart. Um, so the, the leaders of four H there were begging me to help find them a place in Monument to have meetings too. They would like to get a chapter going back here for Monument and Palmer Lake again. Um, I specifically mentioned you guys. So I have already talked to, uh, Terry from the Chamber and I think we can get them plugged in together and provide them a little place to have meetings and they can start getting organized back up here in, in, in Northern El Paso County. Uh, that being said, also the four H, uh, they want to be to announce this at our meeting. Uh, they have a fair fright fest on Sunday, October nineteenth from five to eight PM. Um, it's out in Calhan at the El Paso County Fairgrounds, but it's supposed to be a really good time, great place to bring the kids. So, um, everybody go attend that, that'd be fun. Do you want more details on that, Tina? You're like a question. Yeah. Yeah, so that's Sunday, October nineteenth from five to eight PM. And that is at the El Paso County Fairgrounds out in Calhan. So they're having, uh, activities, costume contests, games and prizes, uh, sponsored by the four H, obviously. Um, yeah, so you go out and support the four H program in El Paso County. The other thing I want to bring up, and this is just an item, uh, food for thought. Um, something, uh, wasn't really, hasn't really impacted our area yet. But, um, on social media, there was back in my hometown, a thirteen-year-old boy, um, that was killed riding an e-bike. He collided with a landscaping truck. It was a, one of the Jewish holidays and they were out of school that day. But what really stuck out in my mind, as horrific as it is, was we have that, we have similar issues here. I've, I've seen the kids doing wheelies down Jackson Creek Parkway. Um, I've had him go by me on the Santa Fe Trail doing forty-plus miles per hour, kicking rocks up at me. So I, it just really got me thinking, I, is there something we could do before a tragedy like that happens here? I don't know if the state is doing anything, if the county's doing anything, but um, just something I want to bring up and hopefully discuss and as much as uh, you know, when I was a child growing up, used to ride a dirt bike to school. But times have changed. Um, and e-bikes are kind of a funny monster because um, as popular as they are, some of these e-bikes don't look very much like bikes. They don't have pedals. They look like motorcycles and they act like motorcycles and they're fast like motorcycles.
Awareness campaign.
What's that?
Awareness campaign.
Awareness, yeah, so maybe awareness or um, I, I'd really like to see something, possibly through the schools, um, to get parents involved, right? Um, maybe we can uh, send a message over there, but it'd be great to make people more aware. I'm not really sure parents know what their kids are riding on the, on the roads out there. And, you know, wearing a helmet is great, but a thirteen-year-old really doesn't understand the rules of the road. And it just, I'd hate to see that tragedy happen here in Monument. But just wanted to bring that up. That's all I got.
So I got one thing. No, it's good. No, no, it's all good. I just um, um, try to stay off social media, especially during this time, um, because there's a lot of, um, a lot of comments, a lot of remarks and a lot of uh, yeah, there's some untruth and there's just a lot of contention. Um, so I, I thought about that, especially recently and over the past, and I know Steve said something, we had that Otis come up and say, make a comment, but I just wanted, I wanted to read this, that I, I put this together just thinking about everything, and I just want to reemphasize something to everybody. So throughout its long history, Monument has navigated challenges that have tested communities nationwide, whether it's through wars, civil unrest and social uh, inequity, pandemics, industrial and technological revolutions. Unlike many towns that faltered, under such pressures, Monument thrived, emerging stronger each time. The secret to Monument's success lies in its tradition of civic cooperation, mutual respect, and effective leadership. It provides a model for the other surrounding communities seeking sustainable growth and not just to survive, but to thrive. What is truly amazing about Monument is the belief of its residents that people working together can accomplish virtually anything, and that is strongly supported and cannot be um, without going, without being said due to Monument staff, the police, fire, and also the surrounding community, so I thank you all.
I don't know how to follow that, but I'm, I'm going to go anyway. Um, okay, so a couple of things. Went through day three of the Municipal Leadership Academy. I will share this with uh, this academy information with um, our neighbors to the north, Palmer Lake. I think that um, several of your members could benefit from the educational opportunities that it provides. Um, this, this uh, last week um, consisted of a tour of the Thornton Amazon Packaging Facility, which was one million square feet. For those of you who are here for the formation of Save Monument, you'll, and, and the Conexus Project, um, you got the oppo, I got the opportunity to see what could have been. And it is, it is quite amazing. They produce um, somewhere around, I, I can't remember the number I quoted, but it was somewhere in the sixty to seventy percent of their own power off their rooftop solar. I, it's a large, it's a very large facility and twenty-five percent of their workforce, which is three thousand people, I should say, three thousand people is twenty-five percent of the available parking spots that are used all the time. So if you think about how much concrete has gone down for this uh, this facility, but I saw where most of our packages come from. And it's a lot of work that these people put in. Uh, they have somebody working there today whose language is not written. So one in three people don't speak English as a first language, and one person there has a language that has never been recorded as written. So they are having to learn with somebody who specializes in foreign languages to teach their leadership, how to communicate with this person. They have people working there that are not just vis, uh, sight challenged, but they're completely blind and they have animals on the property that are well taken care of to allow these folks to work within the packaging facility and everything that they do is based on audio. And, and then the opposite is true with those who are um, hearing challenged and they can see. Um, so it's, it's quite amazing uh, what, what they have done, but still, we don't have a million square feet of warehouse space, which I am thankful for. Uh, the other thing that we did um, that I thought was interesting, and for those that are very much into the firewise, uh, we had an entire uh, session on leadership in crisis. And former mayor of Superior Clint Folsom told us his story about what happened. It's four years ago at this point, when Superior went up in flames and they lost eighty-something percent of their housing stock in minutes. Um, he was actually just getting ready to get on a ski lift in Breckenridge when the first text messages came in saying, Dad, the house is going to be caught on fire and they had to evacuate. Um, there is video and pictures that I am going to get access to if anybody on council wants to see it. It is definitely um, an emotional journey through the eyes of his son, his sons, as they were escaping and rescuing uh, family members and their pets before the houses were no longer there. And then there was other things like civility and leadership. So uh, Otis, I'm happy to share with you this information, so next year, when they go through this, this academy, uh, you can share it with your, your uh, board and, and possibly have one or two people, whatever, sign up to go. It is one, typically one day a month for six months. On a lighter note, um, tomorrow morning at nine o'clock is the Board of County Commissioners meeting, where Commissioner Weisong is going to be reading a proclamation in celebration of the Navy's two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday, which is October thirteenth. Three of us who've served the Navy are certainly invited. Mr. Weisong asked if you can attend. If not, uh, I know that Chad and I will be going. And um, the, the birthday is October thirteenth. We won't be here to celebrate it here, so I wanted to bring it up, but Navy did beat Air Force the other day. Um, and they will be defeating Army on December thirteenth. They are, they are undefeated. No, I'm, I have, I have faith in the Navy and Marine Corps to throttle whoever comes in front of them. Uh, that is all I have. Anybody else? No, okay. We will close council comments and we will move on to executive sessions. Uh, for those who are joining us when we, that are visitors, when the council goes into executive session, um, everybody but the council and a couple of staff members remain. We have to kick the audience out. We are not expected to be making any decisions, so we will be adjourning from within the executive session. Would someone like to read us into executive session?
Sure. I move to move into, I move to adjourn and go to executive session pursuant to.
Or adjourning after.
Adjourn, okay, sorry. Uh, all right, let me try it again. Uh, I moved to go into executive session pursuant to twenty-four tax six, tax four oh two sub four sub B, CRS, for a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions regarding pending legal projects and executive session pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two sub four sub F for discussion of a personal matter related to the town manager's employment contract. The town manager has been notified of this executive session and has consented to it. Following the executive session, we will adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Erickson? We're going to vote twice, right? Okay. You guys logged out?
I don't know.
Really? Amateurs.
Really? We just do one.
Just one.
Okay. Yes. For Abbott, I did lock out, sorry. Oh, wait a minute.
All right, that motion passes seven to zero. We'll take a ten-minute recess while things get set up for the executive session. Thank you for joining us.